How are you? Patricia?
Doing good, doing good. Okay. I'd like to call the order, the City of Riverbank, Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, Planning Commission meeting. Call to order, please.
Chair Hughes?
Here.
Vice Chair Dagley?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
And Commissioner Villebodwa?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to go over the conflict of interest. Any Planning Commission Authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Any conflicts? Hearing none, we'll move forward to number one, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item 2. A, posting of the agenda. Item 2. B, approval of the agenda. Item 2. C, approval of the minutes.
I move we, if there are no comments, I move we accept the consent calendar.
My second.
Roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dagley?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving forward to number three, public hearing. Item 3.1, Riverbank Draft 2014-2023 Housing Element. Recommend to the City Council of the City of Riverbank to authorize staff to submit the draft 2014-2023 Housing Element to the State Housing and Community Development, HCD Department, for a mandated 60-day review period, and to release the draft 2014-2023 Housing Element for public review.
Madam Chair, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director. This is an item that we've been working on for about four, four months, I think. David Diskin will be making the presentation to you tonight. This is a draft document. It's something that's mandated by law. We are asking you to basically forward a recommendation off to City Council to allow us, to allow the department to officially file this document with state to start the 60-day review period. So there's going to be a couple other bites at the apple, so to speak, on this housing element. We're not saying it's done. Well, we are saying it's done, but the state's not done with us. So we've got, you know, at least two reviews to go through with the state and whatever comments they may generate out of that, and then ultimately come back with a final document. David's going to go through kind of the processing steps we've got to deal with, and then, and then go through some, probably some more of the specifics. So go ahead, David.
Yeah, thank you, Planning Commissioners. Thank you, John, for the introduction. This presentation will go through the housing element requirements, contents of the Riverbank Housing Element, the regional housing needs allocation that you've seen before, the city's ability to address the recent regional housing needs, and then major updates to the existing programs and new programs that were, we've developed. And I'll go through what the public review process is, and also HCD findings, as well as the SEQA review, and finally, staff recommendation. Housing element is one of the seven mandated elements of the general plan. The state sets a schedule for periodic update of this element. The current timeframe right now is a nine-year planning period. The previous one was a five, so they've actually extended it a little bit longer this time around. The fifth cycle is what they call it. And it goes from January 20, January 1, 2014, to September 30th, 2023, and it's a nine-year timeframe. And the review is by HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And the review is in compliance with state laws. There's actually government code that regulate the contents of a housing element, as well as the required analysis and data. That's in that document. And then also looking at the projected, existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. And the contents of this housing element go through kind of a step-by-step approach. The first is looking at the household and employment characteristics of the community, the housing stock characteristics, housing supply and needs. We look at the housing production opportunities, also like vacant sites or ULI sites, and then housing production constraints, which that's broken up into portions, the government constraints, which can be related to excessive fees or timeframe for permit approval, as well as we look at non-government constraints with raw construction costs and things like that. And we also look at the evaluation of the last element, housing element, and we look at the programs and policies and implementation measures that, that had in it, and look and see how well it did for that timeframe. And then we also develop new set, a new set of goals and policies, or continue some of the ones that were working well from the, from the last housing element. And this table shows what the regional housing needs allocation. You've probably seen this table. I took it from the workshop that we had a few months back. And for Riverbank, that comes out to be 1,280 housing units that must be planned for during this time period. And if we're broken down by income category, that equates to 321 units for very low income, 206 for low income, 217 for moderate income, and 536 for above moderate income. And for the city's ability to address those housing needs, what we first looked at is the, what the vacant land in the existing city limits, including the downtown specific plan, just taking a look at the sites that do have the potential for development. And we broke that down, and there's a sec, it's in section five of the housing element. We broke that down by the general plan lane use designation, which low density, medium density, and high density, and then used average and max densities to find out what the, the total unit potential is out of those sites. And then we also looked at vacant land within the sphere of influence, as well as vacant land outside the sphere of influence, specifically the Crossroads West, West to Pacific Plan, which is yet to be developed. The total units available that we calculated is 3,234, accounting all of those factors. And it's, it equates to a surplus of 1,984 units compared to the RENA numbers in those income categories. And there's a, we have a table that breaks down each number, each category, each income category by land use. And we've updated the existing, and we've developed new programs. For instance, Program 1.1A, we revised to review vacant sites and pre-zone. And this program's related to the Crossroads West specific plan, so we put this program in here to help facilitate the development and facilitate the planning for that area. And then Program 1.1B is related to that, and we are going to keep up with the residential sites inventory for that area as well. And then Program 2.2A, B, and C are all related to the downtown specific plan. Program 2.2A is to help facilitate the redevelopment of this area. And then 2.2B is to coordinate with nonprofit housing developers, and C is to encourage mixed-use development. And the public review is, like John was saying, is a 60-day mandated public review, and we submit that, and that starts the review period once they've received it. And usually, they take up, from what I've heard and what Mark and John have said, they take the full 60 days to review the document, but during that time, they, we go through a consultation with them, so we know exactly what revisions need to be made, what areas we need to improve upon, and what areas we did well on, as, you know, too. And then for SEQA, the SEQA review is not required at this time because it's in draft form. The programs and policies that we develop and ultimately they get reviewed by HCD and may be revised are, is, is the SEQA, and that's what we use the SEQA analysis on. So we're not going to do any SEQA right now because those programs, programs and policies may change depending on what HCD says. And that concludes my question, my comments. But I also wanted to, just stepping back a little bit, go through the public review. After the 60-day review, we go back to you again, to the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council, for final adoption. And then the, we submit back to HCD for the final approval, and that's a 90-day review. And the current timeframe for that submittal is, and I wish, I thought I created the slide for this, but the, and it could be in your staff report as well, and I think it is, is going to be, I think January is what it says in there. Well, not January, but December for final submittal. It's Tortsy, and...
Steps following approval.
Yeah, steps following approval.
It's on page 21...
Thanks, John.
...of our staff report. It kind of charts this out, talks about following City Council authorization on May 12th, we would submit, and then we'd get theoretically state comments back by July, July 12th. And then we, we start making modifications to the plan, conducting the SEQA analysis, and then re-submitting for hearing September, October of 2015. And then we've got a 90-day review certification by January of 2016. That's what we're anticipating.
That's what we're anticipating now.
So it is a, it is what it is. It's a lo, it's a long, drawn-out process. I mean, a couple, a couple surprises, I think, to me, out of this effort. One is that early on, I was very, very worried that as part of the existing housing element, we had an obligation to go out and to re-zone about 80 acres to, to high-density residential housing. That is a very onerous task on behalf of staff. Fortunately for us, the existing adopted housing element didn't go into great detail as to what sites they had evaluated to come up with, the list, which is good for us because we, we did, we went the extra mile. We went into all the detail that's necessary to support the findings that were representing in this document. And fortunately, we came up with, you know, the acreage we needed in high-density residential to represent the figures that were passed down to us by, by STANCOG. So we're in good shape there. So I'm not having to go out and as an extra effort and re-zone or redesignate properties, which, which sometimes can be very contentious, especially if you're dealing with existing neighborhoods, and they're not necessarily so keen on having high-density residential housing in their backyard. So it, it is extremely difficult. And obviously, it's, as we move forward with these annexation projects like Crossroads West, the general plan has set forth the strategy for land use, which includes the designation of high-density residential development within them, and we're going to count on that. So we're going to plan for it in advance rather than having to plan for it retroactively. So that was, so that was a pleasant surprise, I think, through all of this. Couple other, couple other issues. One of the policies that was part of the adopted housing element was a, was a requirement that the city would move forward with an ordinance for inclusionary housing. What that means is that every new development would be required as a certain percentage to include affordable housing as part of their project, which isn't necessarily that popular, especially in light of the fact that we no longer have redevelopment agency that we can rely on for a 20% set aside to help with affordable housing projects. What was that again? When the city had the ability through the redevelopment agency to work on affordable housing project, part of the RDA set aside was a 20% obligation of their funds collected to be used for affordable housing projects. Since the governor has eliminated RDA redevelopment agencies statewide, we no, we no longer have that pot of money. Actually, it's not just the City of Riverbank, it's any city or county in the state of California no longer have that pot of money that we can, we can rely on. So it's, it's going, it's going to actually make it more difficult, I think, not necessarily in the Central Valley, but in other areas, in the Bay Area, in the Tri-County area, to promote affordable housing projects without that RDA set aside. So you're going to be, there's going to be greater reliance, quite frankly, on state and federal dollars to help make that happen. So.
So what you're saying is there is no state and federal dollars?
No, there's state and federal dollars. There's no redevelopment monies. They're local, that it can be, that can be made available for affordable housing projects. So it was another tool. It was, it was another bridge financing tool that was used by affordable housing advocates to build projects, and that tool's gone.
So there is state and federal dollars?
State and federal dollars are there. Now, that's, that's an interesting point. Those dollars are there provided we have a certified housing element. And there are a number of jurisdictions up in the state of California that have chosen not to get certified. I mean, City Watford's one that they just said, "We don't have the money for it, so we're not going to do it." So they're not certified, and, and it's kind of funny, well, not funny, but the reality is when I was the city planner back in the early, late 90s, early 90s into the 2000s, you know, we had a certified housing element, and quite frankly, we were very, very competitive in securing home and CDBG funds, funds for housing redevelopment. And then they chose not to be certified, so that, those pots of monies weren't available to them. There are other cities, the same, same boat. So that's, that's kind of the incentive, if you will, for jurisdictions to go through the certification, you know, to be able to promote, you know, housing rehab, you know, like we have done in the city. So we're, we're there. We're where we need to be. To be competitive, to secure state and federal funds, because we don't have RDA. So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta work with the tools we've got.
So until we get this housing element complete, we still won't be...
No, we're...
No, we have a certified housing element right now.
And we're, we're in 100% compliance with state law, and the next housing element, well, once we file, we're, we're in compliance. Until it, until what?
Until 2023.
Yeah, so we're, we're good. We're, we're, the state considers us in compliance until we're in non-compliance. So as long as we've filed, we're working in the process, even if approval by the state goes beyond January of 2016, which we're anticipating it to happen, we're still in compliance. So we're still competitive.
Yeah, the filing deadline is the end of December, so we're actually quite a bit ahead of the schedule.
We're ahead of schedule. We're almost six months ahead of schedule.
Are we prepared to file for these federal and state funds?
We have been. We have been. Actually, we have a housing specialist here at the city that's been very active and working with us.
Where are we at in that process?
I mean...
The process, I mean, is that we've already been in compliance with federal and state funds.
Yeah, the, the process is, the process is, there are, there, they publish what they call NOFA's, which are notices of funding availability. So every time they publish a NOFA, you know, Rosa and others work together collectively to submit applications to the state and to the feds to secure housing grants for specific projects in the city. Absolutely.
But that has been published?
It's published and it's ongoing.
Have put in our some...
Yeah, and there, she, she's been quite successful with it as well.
It's, it's talked about in the housing element, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
But with those funds, what areas have we targeted to redevelop?
Well, there's two ways of doing it. With home funds, you could do rehabilitation to help low incomes rehab their homes for better use. There's also CDBG funds for first-time home buyers, which Rosa's been very successful with that.
If you like, we can pull Rosa back at one of our Planning Commission meetings and have her give you a little more detail about the activities that her office is working on, and how those funds are being utilized, and how competitive we are.
I know we've had both of those programs in the past.
Yeah.
Again, they're competitive, so, you know, it's as monies become available, you know, we're there. You know, once the notice of funding availability has become available, you know, we're, we're there, you know, competing. And fortunately, you know, we have a certified housing element, and we'll maintain certification, so we're going to be as competitive as we can.
We're not constructing new housing, we're just rehabbing existing facilities.
Well, I can't say that. I mean, if, if we have applicants like the apartment project that was just built in the corner of Patterson and, and Claus, and we've got another one that's south of California that's been approved, they're, they're going through the application process, again, which is very competitive. Last year, unfortunately, that project did not secure tax allocation credits, but this year, they believe they'll, they're in a better position. So they'll find out about their competitiveness by July. So that's a brand-new affordable housing project that's being promoted within the city, which quite frankly, your commission's already acted on to approve.
Yeah, and there's programs in the housing element that are continued from the last one to assist nonprofit housing developers, like self-help enterprises. And they actually constructed the Riverbank family apartments right over here on Claus. And there's Riverbank Senior Apartments. And in our capacity, we can help identify sites for affordable housing, and this plan, this document, help, assists with that. As far as putting money towards that, I, I'm not sure. Maybe Rosa can speak more to that.
Well, again, the funds that are available would be funds available through, you know, either state or federal program, because again, local funds aren't here. I mean, we have policies, we have procedures, we have the ability to defer fees, you know, we have certain policy-related instruments, you know, at our, at our fingertips, but unfortunately, with RDA not being available, it's not money. It's other, other things locally, anyway.
You guys were mentioning the Crossroads West.
Yes.
We're talking where the...
The geographic boundaries of Crossroads West, which, the name may change, I mean, that's what I'm using right now...
Just tentative.
Is, is, is about 380 acres, westerly of Oakdale Road, halfway, if you will, between Oakdale and Coffee. So if you draw that line imaginarily, north to south, all the way up to the second MID lateral would be the Crossroads West area. So that's north side of Morel, westerly of the sports complex on Morel. And that's mixed use. I mean, it's commercial, it's, they've got at least, at least one elementary school site and possibly two. Fire, fire department's talking about maybe a potential fire station site, and you're going to have low-density, medium-density, and high-density residential development. And they're still working on the plan.
I have a question. Since we know for a fact that there's really not enough water for anybody right now, is that, is that influencing any of the planning that's going on statewide?
Well, okay, statewide or here?
Statewide and here.
It's definitely influencing what's happening statewide. Depending on who you ask, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information, a lot of, lot of misnomers about, you know, who is physically using the water. You know, of the water that's available, of the water that's available, that's a big statement, because you've got a lot of water that's been set aside for environmental purposes of some sort. You know, the urbanists, the cities would tell you that, that less than 10% of that water available is actually being used for urban development. The balance of it is being used for agricultural purposes. So whether it's, whether it's ag that's using it from a surface water supply source or from underground aquifers, you know, that, that is probably, in my opinion, that's probably one of the bigger issues. Locally here in Riverbank, you know, we're, we're blessed, honestly, because the water quality and quantity that we have is, is adequate, is more than adequate. You know, we, we haven't had to worry about, you know, generating or, or expending monies for a surface water treatment-type investment, like Modesto has as an example, or for that matter, like Lathrop and Tracy and, and Mantica have had to invest in.
Are they going to sink in new wells for Crossroads West, at least one?
Well, again, whenever we consider any new development, new development has to, or I should say, water supply, just like sewer, water supply has to be evaluated, are, by an, by a up-to-date urban water management plan mandated by state. When the general plan was completed, NOLTE engineering came in and did a complete engineering analysis, and they determined where well sites and tank, water tanks would be necessary. And in the Crossroads West project, I think there's at least two new well site locations identified, as well as a tank, as well as a well, water tank. So yeah, so it's, it's, it'll, that'll be, all be part of it. They'll have to prove out that they have the ability to provide water, which means they're probably going to have to do some kind of a test well out there.
I keep hearing that they're going to be mandating gray water recovery. Is that, is that a fact now, here and now?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's the case. That's going to be a real tough, tough one. Some, some jurisdictions have gray water available to them, so it's, it's pretty simple whether or not Riverbank goes to a tertiary treatment plant, which means that they would have excess gray water or, you know, purple pipe water available. You know, I'm not sure if that decision's been made yet. There are some, it's kind of, there's some jurisdictions, Ripon is an example, where they've got municipal water wells that have high nitrates, so they've shut them off. They've removed them from the domestic water supply, and they've connected them to the non-potable water supply, the purple pipe system. So they're, they're using that. But the big issue with the non-potable water supply system is that you can't just, you can't just design it and build it, you've got to have a source supply. You know, there's got to be some identified source supply. City of Stockton's, I mean, they're fighting on that same issue, where they've, they've required developers to put in purple pipe system, but they have no, no source supply for the water. So, so they've got a purple pipe system, but they're using domestic water for the purple pipe. You know, what, what good is that? So it really, it really depends on each community's jurisdiction. Statewide enforcement, I, I don't know. I think we're a ways away from that, personally, I think. There might be some jurisdictions where it's absolutely critical, especially as you get on the coast, you know, down around Santa Barbara, maybe, you know, San Luis Obispo, perhaps, I don't know. And it's, I think it's, it's more of a regional issue than, than statewide.
Is it illegal to use drinkable water for any landscape purpose? That's what I keep hearing.
Well, I mean, that's, that'd be, yeah, we'll see.
Not sure that's really current, but that's where we're going.
But that's what's being, yeah, that's what's being talked about. Illegal to use any drinkable water for a landscape purpose.
There's, there's all kinds of issues associated with that, too, because, anyway, whatever, I mean, there's, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I also want to ask, in terms of, I see that, you know, the vacant land allocated for single-family residential and so forth. One of my thoughts is, I know we're, there's a lot of, kind of the bring to code. Are we looking at, or is the city involved with this to improve our school, to that matter, to update our high schools?
Well, you know, schools are an independent body in themselves, right? In Riverbank, you've got actually three different school districts that are involved in educating the kids in Riverbank, right? You've got Riverbank Unified School District, you've got Sullivan School District and Modesto Schools. The boundaries are what the boundaries are. We will continue to cooperate with those jurisdictions to make sure that they have proper school site facilities, that they have areas for school bus drop-off, and that they have safe routes to school. So that, so that's what we're doing.
That's compliance.
From a planning perspective, we're doing what we, what we can, but the reality is that they can locate a school anywhere they want, you know? And, and they've done that. And, and they've located schools where they have to provide their own septic and, and water supply systems rather than relying on city systems. But that's a decision that's independently made by that board of directors. But that's a decision that's independently made by that board of directors. Do what we can. I mean, do, do we include them in the referrals? Yes. Do we include them in pre-planning? Absolutely. The, the, they're... City manager and I, in fact, have made presentations to the Riverbank Unified School District, you know, to help them understand, you know, the type of population growth we might anticipate based on approved projects and kind of what we're seeing here. So, they can help do some of their student generation forecasting. You know, beyond that, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, again, it's an independent body. They have their own decisions to make, you know? Doing something with the high school, you know, most certainly. But I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, getting new growth, you know, in their district boundary, which they really haven't seen much new growth on the east side of, of Riverbank in a long time, you know? And it's hopeful with some of these projects that were approved initially in oh-five and oh-six, and now it's kind of this, this rebirth of what Kerry Pope has worked on, plus others, that, you know, we see a different demographic. And hopefully, that helps the school district. Because, you know, it's, it's the new construction that generates the cash that enables them to do things, so. So, what we're suggesting, by roll call vote, because there's not any official resolution or anything, that you make a recommendation off to city council that this document be released to the state for the sixty-day review.
Motion for a roll call vote to approve item three point one.
So, we're gonna send this up as is, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a, a motion to recommend to city council the Riverbank draft twenty fourteen dash twenty twenty-three housing element that the staff has submitted to us as a draft.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Val Pedro.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment to John and David and the staff who, who worked so hard on developing this housing element draft. They did really an exceptional job, and I, I wanna thank them very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
Items, number four, information only?
Well, I, I'd like to, you know, we're kind of in, we started to talk a little bit about the, the water situation in the state. I wondered if we might be able to have some sort of informational update in the next, either maybe the next meeting or two to give us a sense of where we might be as a, as a city and what we might, might be needing to do. Yeah, forecast and just kind of some basic framework on that.
Understood. We can, I will connect with Michael Rydell and find out if Michael's available. Probably for our second meeting in May, it's gonna be May nineteenth. I'll see if that's okay. I'll find out what his schedule is.
Any correspondence?
No, wait, I'm not you, Commissioner. Item. Do you know, I was reading that, the report that you put of all the things that are hanging in the future. And my eye caught something, a possible gated community? Since I was on the end of a heated losing argument when we were working on the general plan, I think you're gonna find buried somewhere in the general plan where that is not allowed. We have, we have one, and that's the only one. And the people involved felt so strongly about that because connectivity was, was the buzzword.
Connectivity?
Walkable communities. And I was really shot down. But people really do feel safer in a gated community. And people really don't want a whole bunch of strangers that they don't know walking through their neighborhoods. So, if that really is gonna come to pass, I think perhaps we're gonna have to address that.
I, I, I can't remember what item it is on the, my list. You're talking about my planning, planning list?
Yes. And it's just like a possible gated community, which is wonderful.
And, I hadn't, anyway, I, I, yeah, I can't really respond because I, I don't have my list in front of me, and I can't remember which item it was. Yeah, go right in. Go ahead.
Please state your name and...
Chair Hughes and members of the planning commission. As you know, John has been producing a tremendous amount of work. I believe that the reference to the gated community is in regards to some discussions that are going on with the Rivercove neighborhood. And that is one of the items that's there. It is not a likely, it is not a likely scenario. But it's just one of, one of the many options that have been, have been talked about as a possible solution to deal with the issues. Again, it is, is very unlikely that that would come to pass.
And I, and I wanna talk about something. If it, if it is buried in the general plan, I think we're gonna, we may have to end up revisiting that. Because I think with the Crossroads West project, you know, I, I have heard from a number of individuals in town that are local that have been here forty-plus years that have instilled in me a vision that they want to have, you know, empty nester-type housing. And gated or not, they, you know, they're, some of their desires is to have kind of a gated project like that. So, I'll have to, I'll have to, I can't remember why that's on my list. It's probably because of Rivercove, but it is gonna be an issue that I think we'll be dealing with. Because I think there, not every project, but in some areas, there, there might be the opportunity to do such a thing. I don't know. We'll, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay.
Now then move on to number five, please? The correspondence information, or county referral information?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have any county referrals. It's been pretty quiet on the western front, so, nothing there. Upcoming meeting agendas, Galaxy Theater. We do have to have a special meeting on May fifth, twenty fifteen. I understand that you'll, your commission, most of your commissioners will be available. And it would've been on tonight's agenda, but there were a couple of issues that we're still dealing with, one of which, quite frankly, was Caltrans. Caltrans, as part of the review, suggested they need to do a new traffic analysis. And, and when we, and we, when we looked at it, you look at what was originally approved, what they've done with the seating adjustments, and what they now wanna do, they're still under the thresholds of the, what was evaluated when the project was originally approved. So, I had to give that documentation to Caltrans. And I, and we, we achieved something fairly quickly in the Caltrans world. Within a week, I got a letter back from Caltrans saying that they agreed with me that a traffic analysis would not be necessary under the terms that was described to them. So, that enabled me to say, okay, yeah, we can do it on May fifth. Couldn't make it today's meeting, May fifth. So, that's, that was pretty cool. And then, and it's, and they're talking about, I mean, it's, you're talking about a three and a half million dollar investment, you know, at that site in this theater complex. And so, the way I look at it, you know, if we can do something special to help them, I think it's a good idea. We only meet once a month. A lot of the cities, they'll have two planning commission meetings a month. Can't imagine having to do that. But anyway, so that, so that's the case. So, so May fifth, May, so that'll be the only item on May fifth, by the way. May nineteenth, which is our, our normal meeting. As I sit here, I mean, I see Cuffle Parsa Map. They're still dealing with Caltrans issues. This is where the recycling center is. They're at Patterson and Atchison's? Anyway, Calendar. It's a Patterson and Calendar there, sorry. And then Fourth Street Parsa Map. I finally got all the material in on the Fourth Street Parsa Map. So, it's out for referral to agencies. It may or may not be ready for May ninth. Dave, is there anything else for May ninth? Nineteenth, May nineteen, sorry? No? So, we may, I mean, it's not a long shot, but it could be a long shot that we could, we not, may not have a May nineteenth meeting. So, anyway, we'll have to see how that plays out. We are working on an application. You'll, you'll see this on my list for a project called Ward Villa, which is off Ward Avenue, the south side of Ward Avenue. It's been on the market for a while. It's an infill piece, about two and a half acres. It's westerly of Rocky Lane, which is this little dirt road off of Rozelle. And they wanna do kind of a, it's a PD, it's an infill PD project. So, they're talking small lot, like thirty-two hundred square foot lots where it's a, where it's a townhouse duet. And it's got architecture in the whole bit. They're working through the details on that, on that project. And they wanna redesignate it from low-density to medium-density because they're going to higher density. They're going eight and a half units to the acre, something like that.
Like a, what do they call it?
Being HOA, being a homeowner association, non-gated, private street coming in off of Ward. Private street coming in off of Ward. And it'd be two-story units, side by side, sharing a common wall.
Close to Patterson, right, or is it?
Close to Patterson. Close to Patterson. I hear rumors that with Hays one and Hays two, which is a couple residential projects just south of the high school, easterly of Claus, that, that because their maps are getting ready to expire, and they've had nine years to do something on this. Well, seven of the nine years, we've been this economic depression. So, so nine years to do something. It looks like they may be applying for a development agreement, which you guys haven't seen in a while, to extend the life of the map and, and to perfect a number of other questionable issues that are part of the conditions. So, you're probably gonna see those coming down the line outright this moment. But those will be coming down the line too. And then the Crossroads West project is gonna be evolving. They've got, there's a lot of work to do. A lot of pre-engineering work that's gotta be done. And finalization of their land plan before I can release and get a EIR consultant on board, because they're still trying to define the project.
Does anybody have any idea what's going on on Patterson in front of the vets?
Yeah, they're, what they're doing, they're finally settling the grade. So, that's a Caltrans project. So, what they're doing is they're gonna be raising the, the road elevation to be consistent all the way across north to south.
Oh, you're gonna do the rough stuff?
And then they'll, then they'll have, then they're, they've, they're developing a driveway into the site. And that's where you see those retaining walls. And those boxes that you see up out of the air are actually drainage inlets. Those are part of the drainage that'll accommodate all the drainage off the road, road segment. So, you no longer will have a big hole there.
City looked into, or do we have it somewhere on our plan? Like hotels, motels, holiday ends? I mean, because that's a, that's a valued source of revenue because there isn't anything where families and friends come to visit.
In proximity, yeah.
Right, unless you go up to Oakdale.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, we've looked into it. I mean, we got zoning that allows it. I mean, it's just...
How do we reach developers that do things like that?
The county has a economic development group. I think they are involved with some of that.
We, we, we do. I mean, but, you know, we don't, we used to have, I mean, the city used to have economic development manager, right? So, now it's kind of like, you know, the, the city manager, you know, Jill filling her position, but then sort of trying to do that as well.
We had interest at one point.
We're working with Norma. Norma's kind of helping to do it, but there's not, I mean, Commissioner McKinney, there's not any one person that's focused on, you know, dealing with trying to entice motels, you know, into the town. I mean, quite frankly, quite frankly, that's a, that's certainly a, a good option because of the TOT tax that could, that, that, and that generation opportunity into the city offers. Anyway, so it sounds like Jill's ready to, to add to that.
Because I'm looking at, you know, in the past, we're looking at how, when the economy went into a downturn, on our spoke of city income, when one major facility moved out, meaning the ammunition plant, or the, where we have the, I guess, the cannery or whatever that was over there moved out, the city took a big hit. We wasn't diversely prepared for that because of all our income coming, the majority of our income coming from manufacturing. We had nothing on our spoke to gather other income resources, which is that particular taxes for, you know, hotel. Right now, we have one of our major, one, other income revenue streams is the, over in the Crossroads area, we're looking at the Safemart, you're looking at the Home Depot. Those particular type of areas drawing that particular area. But all it takes is something like one of them to decide to, to leave, and we're not, and, you know, then, then again, we're in that area again. So, what I'm saying, what are we doing on economic, as you mentioned, John, development?
Prospects?
Right, to make sure that we are making the city a little bit more economically stable.
That, that's an excellent question. And Chair Hughes and members of the commission, in particular Mr. McKinney, I totally agree with you that the city needs a hotel. You know, it is a, it is a glaring omission in our, in our city plan. The, a lot of what we're doing to prepare the way for economic development is a lot of what you have been doing and what John has been doing over the course of the last year and a half, two years that you've been here now, John? Two years. So, he's done about, he's done five years' worth of work in two years. And I cannot just speak highly enough about his productivity and his ability to work through these issues. So, what, what I can tell you is that this is private development. This is private dollars. That no hotel, no business, period, no business, is going to put money into any city unless they believe that they can make money. The city cannot guarantee that. What the city can do is make sure that it has planning processes, documents, et cetera, to be able to support that investment when and if it comes. So, one of the things that is really, very valuable to the city is the work that you're doing in reviewing the plans, reviewing the housing element, reviewing the downtown specific plan, reviewing, you know, the Nexus fee study, all of these things that we are trying to put into place. So, when people come to the city of Riverbank, that they, they know that they can go through a process that's predictable. What the development community has told me, and I think John would, would agree, is that they want predictability. They want to know, how, you know, how long is it gonna take to get through the process? Is there going to be support to work through solutions, to solutions, and to work through problems that no doubt arise? So, I think what the work that we're doing is we are paving the way for the next wave. The, the previous administration, and some of you are actually involved in that planning commission, great foresight to have Crossroads, to, to make that effort. We, we look at a potential expansion of that. If a hotel could be a part of that, that would be great. The Galaxy and the IMAX, that's a huge, huge boom for this city. That's private dollars, private investment on private property. Does the city help that? Yes, but it is private dollars. They believe that that business model will be successful and that they will make money. And that's what we want. We want people here who are successful and making money because that means they stay in business, they keep people employed, they generate tax revenue, property sales, et cetera, that can be reinvested back in to provide services. So, what we're actually hoping is that with the downtown specific plan, the success of the Patterson corridor with the Galaxy, that that will entice some people to, to look at a hotel down the road. The success of the local redevelopment authority and the industrial complex, that might also help. Because I, I totally agree. I would like to see a hotel here sooner rather than later. But the reality is that we, the economy is still picking up, and there still needs to be the willingness of people to take significant risk. There needs to be money available from a variety of lending sources to be able to invest. And, and some of those pieces are coming together in some cases, and in other cases, not so much. So, yeah, it would be, I think John and I would both welcome the opportunity to present a hotel proposal to you for your consideration. Is that, does that generally address the question? Or if you'd like to me, any questions for what I shared?
I mean, that answers the question why we don't, I guess, reach out for it. That's what it sounds like to me. It's not something that we reach out for. I don't know, but I think we do have the...
Isn't that, I don't know, but I think we do have the, um, the traffic that's going to come through, I guess, because they're going to be redirecting, what, 108 or something like that? So we have the traffic coming through, but we have no way of really, when people come to Riverbank, for them to stay in Riverbank. Because we have the wine and cheese festival, things that go on. We have other activities that go on. And then when somebody comes here, they don't have a place to stay and, you know, they have more, you know, more money to spend or more opportunities to, to stay here and, um, you know, really digest what Riverbank has to have because there's no place for someone to sit down and properly feed for 72 hours and, you know, and get a nice whiff of the environment. It's a suggestion. It's just something, you know, I think that we should strongly look into. Because I, looking at the, I mean, you look at the traffic from, I guess you look at it from 11 to about 6:30 or 7:00. I mean, you, you actually have traffic. I mean, so as far as through traffic, as far as street traffic, as far as, uh, through traffic coming from, coming from Modesto or off the freeway, going to Knights Ferry or going to, um, Oakdale. And people even going up there to see their, you know, chocolate festri- festival or what have you. I think if we did some type of study or if there's some type of study available to see what type of traffic is coming through here, because that's probably what it would be, to see whether or not, you know, is, is there, um, a sizable amount of visitors coming here that would, you know, because it's not a long stay place. It's, it's a play with, place where somebody's going to stay a weekend or three days. And is that enough traffic coming through to support? That. And I, I, I think we have some traffic coming through. I mean, we're not looking for, you know, uh, you know, a, a nine-story, 2,000-room building or something like that. But, you know, you, you look at some of these, um, holiday ends, some of these business places that's coming through. Right.
Well, the, the, the platform really, I mean, that, that's really the issue is what platforms are available for cities to be able to advertise this type of thing. And, and quite frankly, it's the alliance and our partnership in the alliance that you worked as the platform that we use not only for hotel development, but, but for job creation and other commercial opportunities. The other is, quite frankly, is, the other is, is being able to demonstrate success. Galaxy Theater is success. Success is what's going on with, with, uh, Crossroads Shopping Center. Success, what's going on with the LRA. I mean, there's a number of successes that eventually are going to help the city gain, you know, gain attitude, gain experience, gain notoriety to get others to come in. And quite frankly, one of the other things the city's working on, which we're very enthusiastic that hopefully it's to, to a tool that really works is, is, is a revised, um, website. And having, having, having it user-friendly, which right now really isn't that user-friendly. So the hope is with that and all the other things that are going on that, you know, we're going to have more of an opportunity. We're not Oakdale. We don't have 120. We don't have the Bay Area traffic unless, you know, we somehow, you know, shut it off at Escalon, you know, have, and divert it through town. We don't have that. So then those folks, those folks are going to Yosemite, they're going somewhere else. So they've already traveled, you know, two, two and a half hours at whatever time of night, right? And so we don't have that. So we have, our traffic draw is more local. I mean, they're, they're, people are here, really.
And we actually.
The exception to that is 108. The exception to that is 108. And, um, and maybe with the North County corridor, you know, 108 is promoted more for Bay Area, so, to speak, traffic to Oakdale and beyond. I, you know, maybe, I don't know. So maybe we end up with something, you know, down around the LRA or out at Eleanor or, or somewhere in that area around Rainbow Fields, you know, that works as a good location. Because now we got, we got, what, we got an event, you got Rainbow Fields, right, that has tournaments. See, there's, 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 there's a cause. And then you've got, you know, 108, 120 traffic directed, redirected to 108 because it's faster, right? Faster than everybody recognizes that, you know, to be able to promote a hotel there. I don't know.
We did that, uh, I'm sorry. We did this study years ago here. We actually, they were giving pretty much the Del Rio facility to this hotel company. They did their study. They did their environmental. They did everything. We, we walked it, we toured it, we looked at everything. They even had the drawings rendered, a boutique kind of, small, mid. I still talked to one of the guys on that panel with the hotel company and they just didn't see the numbers.
How long ago was that?
This is, uh, uh, four, four years ago? Yeah. And still very current data in terms of, uh, but traffic, like you were stating, I think has picked up a little. There's been more.
Because I, oh, go ahead.
But, I mean.
Because I'm looking, we have events that go on.
No, no, correct. And I, and I agree.
People have to, they come here on whatever day it starts and then have to leave.
Yeah. We had folks staying in.
And then have to come back.
In Salida to come here to, to do their event for the.
Hey, Salida, I think is the closest.
Same thing as the Asparagus Festival in Stockton. Same exact thing, you know?
Stockton has a lot of hotels.
But, you know, I, I think they're probably, I mean, it's not, it's a one, it's, it's a one deal, one-shot deal, right?
I go to Monterey Blues Festival. Even though you can drive back and forth, I don't do it.
It's because it's two hours.
Lay down at the hotel. Right. And then I drive over to the festival after that's finished and I go and party at the hotel.
Do you think, do you think the Riverbank Cheese and Wine has a two, has a, has a draw for people to live over two hours away?
I think the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival has a, has a, has a, a large following.
I got that, but I'm just, what, I mean, demographically, where's the draw? I mean, I don't know. I don't know. Do we know what that is?
Yeah, I, I think the dilemma is that they need, they're looking for consistency throughout the year, 52 weeks a year, to be able to do that. And, and, and in the economy, after the economy collapsed, the hotel industry pretty much dried up. All the money, if, if there was any money for hotels, it was going into renovating existing sites. And then, and it's just, you know, i- is it coming out? I, I think, I do think though, to your point, that once, I think Crossroads West is an issue we've actually talked about with the developers. We would love to see a hotel there, um, to be able to take advantage of Rainbow Fields, the industrial complex, shoppers, as well as just, you know, people coming for different events. But we need to have that draw, uh, 52 weeks a year, um, through that. So the, the other positive thing in that, I think, as, as we do see Crossroads West develop, hopefully we'll be able to, the development community will be able to deal with some of the private property owners that have been really resistant to doing deals, to be able to, to develop the corridor along Patterson. That's another possibility. That looking down the road three to four years from now, um, hopefully sooner, is, is looking at maybe targeting a couple of areas that we need. But we're going to need to have the other foundation of the shopping, the industrial complex, those things kind of work through. So it definitely, it is definitely on the radar screen. Definitely on the radar screen.
What happened with this place down here?
The hotel? The Riverbank. We use the term, we, we use the term loosely. Yes, yes, absolutely correct. Yes, um, I'm, I'm very sad to say that is the only reference to a hotel we have in the city. John and I actually have a meeting regarding that with the owners tomorrow. And we'll, we'll be discussing the, um, potential they, they are, they are indicating they want to sell and they want to know what they could do with it in the future. So, the city has been working, um, very proactively to encourage them strongly, legally and with other means as well, any means at our disposal, to encourage them to make investments in that property and to provide a safe place for the residents to live. They have, they have responded where it is, it is meeting all health and safe, the basic health and safety codes at this point. You're welcome. Thank you.
I mean, um, I agree. I think we ought to have one. But one of the things in the lending side, they, they put a, uh, no lending to hotels and motels based on their revenue patterns. So it's hard to get funding. It's more bridge financing, hard money. They got to pay, um, high upfront fees as well as high interest rates. Uh, but yet, they're still doing them. But again.
So basically, you're not helping us. So you.
I'm just stating, it's a tough.
Well, we can get a motel in town.
We have one.
Come on, Carlos.
We have one.
You gotta help us. You gotta help us out. We're talking about a real one.
But I agree. I think we should have one. I mean, it, yeah, I agree.
Don't be throwing out there.
I think we should. And I think they should have took advantage of the Del Rio when they did that opportunity. It would have worked.
I have another question. When are we going to be able to watch the city council meetings on TV?
You can.
No, you can't.
On the, on the internet, I'm sorry.
Well, you can't on channel two. You can all settle down and turn on the television to see a black screen, what's happening?
So unfortunately, yes, um, at the last meeting, uh, there were problems with Charter. And we've often had trouble with AT&amp;T as well. It was not an issue from here. It was an issue with the cable company. So I'm not sure which one you had. I think it was Charter that was the problem this last time. It is, um, there. We, we are hoping that with the new website, we build that tech, we're trying to build our technology infrastructure for, um, public outreach, that, that in the not-too-distant future, we would be able to have them live on the internet. So.
So is it, is it just not going to be televised for a while or?
No, that was a one, that should have been a one-time thing. But it, we do have it recorded, so it should still be able to be, you should be able to get it on the internet now. But that, that doesn't address the issue of you're prepared to come and watch it. So I, I do apologize for that.
Livestreaming is, is pretty progressive. That's a great idea.
Yeah, well, hopefully we'll be able to do that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I move we, uh.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I said it.
All right.
The Riverbank Planning Commission meeting Tuesday 20, April 21st is now officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
Not a minute over.
Nice. Look at this. John?